All right, I'm calling to order the Communications and Water Efficiency Committee of the Board of Director for Marin Water for today, May 25th, 2020, and we're going to begin by calling the role.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Gibson.
Here.
Director Russell.
Here.
Director Schmidt.
Here.
And Chair Kohler.
I'm here. We are now, I'm now looking for a motion to adopt today's agenda.
Approval of the agenda.
Second.
Do we have any public comment on the agenda?
Not on the agenda.
Okay, then, do we have any board comment on the agenda? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
Vice Chair Gibson.
Hi.
And Chair Kohler.
Hi. Do we have any public comments on item not on the agenda?
There are none.
That brings us to the regular calendar, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, which was in February.
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Do we have any other board comment on the minutes? Seeing none, do we have any public comments on approval of the minutes from last meeting?
There are none.
Okay, let's call the roll.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
Vice Chair Gibson.
Hi.
And Chair Kohler.
Hi. We are on item two, which is the communications update.
Let me just share my screen. All right, there we go. Good morning, Directors. I am Adrienne Mertens, Communications and Public Affairs Manager, and today we'll be providing an update on our communications outreach activities. And so we'll first focus on a recap of our activities from this past quarter, as well as some things that are currently in motion, and then we'll move into an overview of a strategic communications work plan that we've developed to help to guide our work for the next year. And so for our current and ongoing activities, I want to start by highlighting a recent major project, which was transitioning our web presence from the water shortage emergency to a long-term focus on water use efficiency. And of course, this effort happened immediately following the board's actions in early May to rescind our water shortage emergency and some of the related restrictions to that, while at the same time adopting some of those temporary restrictions into our ongoing normal water year rules. And so the website had really been hyper-focused on the water shortage emergency over the last year. And so there was a great need to kind of pull together all of those different web pages and drought-related information and transition into kind of this new landing hub for water use efficiency. And so all of our conservation pages now are in the same landing page, which is marinwater.org/no-water-wasted. And on that page, it's really a menu of options for how customers can potentially eliminate water waste at home with support from Marin Waters program offerings. And then some additional water use efficiency outreach has really been focused on our Water Smart Gardening resources. At our last committee meeting, I introduced our new online resource center for Water Smart Gardening. And that site, as a reminder, includes a lot of curated content from other agencies, some of our partners, as well as our own materials on ways to achieve water savings in the gardener landscape. We have a calendar of all of our educational opportunities for Water Smart Gardening, as well as free landscape design templates there and other great information. And so we've developed a number of marketing materials to help get the word out about that resource. We created a rack card that we've been distributing at outreach events, as well as other point-of-service locations, which has a QR code to access that site. We also have worked with the Water Use Efficiency Team to reintroduce the weekly watering schedule this year. We did a redesign of that, so you can see that on the screen, what that looks like. That's now going out weekly and has been since March. And then we've done a number of paid advertisements to also get the word out about our resources. And then, of course, our spring issue of On the Water Friend. We made that a full issue focused on outdoor water savings, and specifically in the garden and landscape. And then after a long hiatus from in-person outreach events due to the pandemic, our staff have been able to recently get back out into the community, participating in a number of different outreach events and other in-person opportunities. We've really been using that, those opportunities as a way to distribute our water use efficiency fixtures and talk to customers about how they can achieve water savings. And then also to promote our incentive and rebate programs, as well as our gardening resources and other district information and programs. And then we've captured a couple additional notable outreach efforts on this slide here that I wanted to be sure to mention. The first, of course, remains a high priority, or strategic water supply assessment. We are having bi-weekly meetings now, public meetings, and on that process, and we want to make sure that the public is informed and kept up to speed on when those opportunities are available to listen in and provide comment. So we are promoting each of those meetings before, and then also recapping after to point people to the presentations and where they can watch the recordings. And we're updating all of this information on our water supply projects page, which is marinwater.org/watersupplyresiliency. A couple weeks ago, we also published the 2021 Water Quality Report. So that's available online in both English and Spanish, and we've done some promotions to ensure that our customers are notified that that report is now available. There's a Bill Insert running currently that has a QR code to lead people to the report online in both English and Spanish. And that Bill Insert was bilingual. And then there's also instructions in that Bill Insert and our other outreach around the Water Quality Report to let people know how they can contact customer services to have a hard copy mailed to them if they prefer to receive that information that way. And then also, we've been working with our construction management group to provide advanced noticing on the East Blight Isle Pipeline Replacement Project. There was significant, or anticipated significant traffic impacts from this project, and so we really tried to get ahead of that as much as we could with letting customers know in a variety of ways, you know, about the timing of this project and what to expect. And then we've continued in our work with the construction management team to provide monthly updates about the project and that progress, so people know where we are, how much, how, how far we've come each month in completing that work, and how close we are in sticking to our timeline that we committed to. And then finally, this was wrapped up in March, but we did go through the redistricting process, and there was a great deal of outreach associated with that, just to make sure that our customers were aware of some change, some minor changes that were made to our division boundaries here in the district as a result of census data from the 2020 census, and then some LAFCO modifications as well. And we worked closely with GIS and our council to implement that project. And then to take a look at the performance of some of our digital.
Interrupt. Can we, can we just go back for just a second?
Yeah.
So I just want to lose track of this. So I wanted to say a couple of quick things. First, on the construction project on East Blight Isle, I don't know if the other board members are spending any time in Mill Valley lately, but it is a big deal, and it's been very disruptive, and that which we all anticipated. But that said, I just want to give a huge shout out to the teams on this, because there's been a lot of concern and, you know, but people are on it. And, you know, I'm hearing nothing but, you know, but good things is what I'm trying to say, because it is, it's just going to be, it just, the nature of it is, it's going to be incredibly disruptive. But from a comms perspective, I think we're knocking it out of the park. There's a couple of crabby people who've reached out to me, how am I getting my driveway? And, you know, the team has just been completely on it and, you know, responsive and immediate. So I just think it really demonstrates that when we are coordinated, especially with the cities, we can make even these very necessary but challenging projects work for the community. So I just want to pause and just say that, you know, I know this was a lot of work setting it up, and whatever you guys did was worth it and is working. So I just really want to acknowledge that. And then on the water supply assessment, I'd want to look, just raise a few points that came up last night. I think the, the presentations have been solid, but they have been the kind of presentations that your consultant provides to your technical staff. So, I mean, not exclusively, but a lot of it. And I, I think what we need going forward, because I think there's been a fair amount of confusion. I mean, it's just, it's not surprisingly been a little jargon-heavy. And so I, I think the information needs to be presented. I'm not saying that different information needs to be presented, but I do think the information needs to be presented differently. There was a fair amount of discussion last night about use of the English language. I think it needs an overview from comms or whoever, so that it is clear, like, looking at it from the lens of the public and from non-engineers about what exactly it is we're saying about these scenarios, and what exactly it is we're saying about how the scenarios are going to be fleshed out. Because I think a fair amount of what was discussed was unnecessarily inaccessible. So so I want to be clear, I think the consultant's doing a fine job with the analysis, but I think where we need work is on how we're communicating, you know, what is being proposed and what those scenarios are and what they mean. So I don't know if other board members want to jump in here, if you want to wait till later, but I just wanted to bring that forward, given the, this, the conversation last night, and just, you know, emails and texts I've been getting from people saying, what's going on? We're very confused. Especially since it is a little different than most, or at least the scenario planning that I've done, I understand why they're doing it this way. But generally, I think I was expecting the scenarios were going to be more, you know, low demand, current, you know, current demand. You're sort of different demand level scenarios, and that's not what we're doing necessarily, which is fine, but I just think it needs to be explained in a way that's more accessible. Does that, does that resonate with you, Adrienne?
Yeah, thanks for your comments. I think we can work with Paul and Lucy and the consultant to get a fresh kind of perspective and eyes on presentations moving forward, and make sure that the language presented is more understandable to the general public. And we do have an upcoming community workshop as well, where we'll be getting materials ready for that, that'll cover some of the information previously presented, and we'll definitely make sure that that is ready to go and something that can be digested by many.
Yeah, I do, I do want to follow up on Director Kohler's comments, because I, I agree entirely, and was one of the people that commented on the very jargon-like language that was used. Synthetic drought was the one that kind of nailed me. And there were a few others that just, you know, they're, they're very sort of, they're not designed for the public. And I think when and if we get to a final draft that's going to go out to the public, it really needs to be in understandable language for the public and for the board as well, because I've got to say, some of it left me pretty question, questioning what exactly the, it, it meant. So I just want to follow up with that. I think it's, it's a good point and appropriate time to make it now that it's up on the screen.
Yeah, I don't want to pile on, because it, it's really challenging. I mean, especially, you know, consultants who are trying to, you know, they're trying, they, they, they know that they're speaking to us at least a little bit more as an educated audience, or even to staff, you know, even more so. But really, we do need to bring along folks who are, you know, are in our community, who are, who care, are concerned, who are going to, you know, who are going to look at these, these presentations, you know, offline at a later time, you know, and, and so, you know, it just, it is a lot of additional extra work to make it accessible for, for the layperson. But it's really important that we do that, because we, we're doing this, you know, for, for two reasons. The first, of course, is to do a really robust analysis of what our water supply reliability options are for the future, and that's obviously the foremost. But secondarily, is, is obviously to, to help educate our, our public, our community and our customers who are going to who care and want to know what we're doing and, you know, and will ultimately need to be supportive of what we decide. So, you know, in terms of the presentations, I would look at that. I'm also looking at on our website, you know, and, and it's not impenetrable. It's, it's not terrible by any means. I don't mean to, I don't want to start off by criticizing it like that, but I would just look at things and be like, do people know what inner ties are? Like, we say, projects to be, to be assessed, and we have inner ties. And it's like, I know what those are, but I don't think that a lot of other people do. So if we can just, you know, almost like, I don't know, if we can grab somebody, you know, if we, you know, that isn't steeped in this stuff, to look at it and go, does this make sense? Or do you have questions? Just so we can backcheck, and, and, you know, again, just, you know, make something more accessible for our community.
Yeah. And then, and then before we go too much further, and I do want to get to the metrics, but I just want to make sure we're, we're commenting in real time. So, so thank you for that, and everybody. And then along the same lines, you had a slide a little earlier, the transition from short-term emergency to long-term water use efficiency. Efficiency is part of it, but I'm realizing that that term is also, I think we use that as shorthand for a lot of demand management efforts that are not all technically efficiency. So, you know, for example, somebody reached out to me, you know, and was saying, I don't understand what you guys aren't doing reuse. I'm like, okay, we are doing reuse. You know, I, you know, that is part of what we're doing, right? We are providing rebates, for example, for gray water, and, which I, I think a lot of people, is that efficiency or is that reuse? So I think we need to be clear in our language on the website about what we're talking about, right? Conservation and efficiency are not just use less water, take less showers. It's, you know, how are we going to be sustainable? And here are the many, many, many ways that we can be not wasting water, right? We can be reusing it, you know, when it falls, you know, a lot of the, you know, you know, you know, myself and other board members have been talking about cisterns and capturing rainwater and, you know, gray water, and all of these different options are going to be, you know, are, are going to be differently, used differently by different people, right? Not everybody is set up for cistern. Not everybody's going to be set up for gray water. So the idea is to have many opportunities for communities and individuals and businesses to be taking advantage of ways that they can become more sustainable, whether it's reuse or efficient appliances, or, you know, reducing demand because you're doing other things. But I think we need to find some way of talking about that that looks broader than just, you know, use less water. Does that, does that make sense, Adrienne?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And you know, the website, I think, as I was kind of presenting, it's really, it presents a menu of options in the way that it's set up so that people can look at different ways to reduce their water waste. And so when you're on there in the way that, you know, and it kind of tells a story and you scroll through, there are different avenues you can take depending on what, you know, the, the site you're working within is, what your needs are. And so hopefully, that's coming across, but definitely we'll take those comments into consideration as we're building out some of these outreach strategies.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And then I, I think the other thing that I saw on the page, you can get to the rebates, but it takes a few clicks. So I think we may want to find some ways to elevate those, but I think you're gonna.
Yeah, well, we'll be getting to that here coming up.
All right.
All right. And so we'll look at our analytics on our digital platform. So first, this is a snapshot of our website traffic from this past quarter. You know, I note that we've got 203,000 web views and 53,000 of those are from unique visitors as opposed to repeat users. And our visitors are spending an average of 1 minute and 30 seconds on our site. And then our most visited pages, this is not different than normal, at least since the last time I reported. Our Water Watch page continues to be our most visited page, and it's actually where we put quite a bit of attention. And we do update that page daily, Monday through Friday. And except when we experience the occasional technical difficulty that prevents us from that, but that is a page that we know is very important to our customers, and so we spend a lot of time there. And then second, our homepage, I want to note that, because that'll have some importance later as I talk through our strategic communications plan. And then just a note about our users by device. 58% of our users are on desktop and 39% are using their mobile, mobile devices to access our information. And then for.
Ask, how do you know when people are using a tablet as opposed to a mobile device? That's really interesting.
You know, I couldn't tell you exactly, but Google Analytics is able to track that, and they, why that information broken out for us, yeah, which is really great, and it's helpful for us. We're actually using that when we create our websites or redesign something visually. So we can make sure that we're looking at it on both a desktop and, you know, on our phones and a tablet to make sure that it is looking right, no matter which way someone is accessing the information.
Right. The, the unique users, I don't want to pass you to pass that by too fast either. I mean, 52,000 unique users, given that we have, you know, 62,000 accounts is pretty interesting. So.
Yeah, I thought that was a pretty high number.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, for our email campaigns, first, our monthly e-news. Our subscription rate is currently at 20,487. And like last time, when I reported out, we continue to have really high open rates each month on our e-news. And we are using this to talk about current updates and the hottest items coming out of Marin Water and our upcoming events and opportunities to engage with the public in person through our webinars and other outreach events. And as you can see, the industry open rate is 31.9%. That's, you know, really, you're doing a good job, and we're well over that. And so that's something we continue to watch and look at how we can grow more. And then for our volunteer event newsletter, this is a much more targeted newsletter, 2,570 subscribers. Those are are ongoing and past volunteers. And our open rate there actually remains quite high, too, at 37.2%. And then finally, our weekly water savings or weekly watering schedule. Weekly e-blast, which we started in March, is averaging over 53% open rate, which is great, and we continue to build on that subscription list as well now that that tool's available.
Adrienne, you, can you, what are you guys doing to increase? I mean, the open rates are fantastic. What are you guys doing to increase the, the subscribers?
Yeah, if we could hold on that, I, I actually will get into that a little bit when we get into the looking forward part of the presentation.
Okay.
And so for our analytics for social, I've got our four channels or four handles up here, and I've included also what our top performing post was on each of those handles in the last quarter. And so for Instagram, we have 2,100 followers. We did 53 posts this past quarter, and we've reached 20,000 subscribers, which is pretty great. Our Phoenix Lake Trail closure, which was just a one-day event, ended up being the most engaged, or, excuse me, the post that had the most engagement and most traction on Instagram. For Facebook, followers are at just over 1,700. We reached 13,000 folks with our post of this quarter, and our partnership with College of Marin to offer the watershed approach to landscaping classes was our post with the best traction. And then for Twitter, our strategic assessment, our strategic water supply assessment workshop promotion was the most engaging tweet. And we had 31,400 impressions on Twitter. And then for Nextdoor, I do just want to clarify, members is a little bit different than followers here. Members is actually the total universe of people that we can reach within Nextdoor who are within our service area footprint. They haven't necessarily opted in or subscribed to follow us, as is the case with our Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter followers. However, I will say that Nextdoor continues to be a really great way for us to communicate with the community. Our impression numbers there are really high, 86,000 or over 86,000. And we do notice quite a bit of engagement on our posts. We have some good back-and-forth dialogue at times on different topics, and so I think this is somewhere that we'll also continue to look for posting a lot of our information.
Adrienne, can you talk a little bit more about Nextdoor? I, I can't speak for the other board members, of course, but, and I'm not on Nextdoor a lot. But I have friends and neighbors who are, and it, it seems to be, I mean, I'm very interested that you're finding this to be so positive, because the information I get is really toxic, you know, just a lot of misinformation, a lot of, you know, don't trust the waters, you know, the water quality, and, you know, the district is feckless, and, you know, just a lot of, a lot of, you know, real, very, very negative and mostly uninformed and inaccurate. And I've been told in the past, there's nothing we can do about that. And certainly, we don't want to get involved in a tit-for-tat. But mostly, when, when people are reaching out to me, they're like, nobody is responding from the district to this misinformation, you know, and, and individuals, like, I can tell my friends, well, this is actually what's happening, and we're actually exceeding our standards. You know, they don't want to get into it with these kind of angry people, and there do seem to be some organized campaigns.
Yeah. And so when I talk about the success of Nextdoor, I'm talking about when we post out our information, how it's being received. And that is a downfall of Nextdoor. You're absolutely right. It's, you know, in the different roles I've had, this is always a problem. And as a public agency, we can post out information. But Nextdoor was really also designed to be a place for neighbors to connect in kind of private conversations within their own community footprints. And public agencies don't have a seat at that conversation. And so we can't respond, you know, as someone said, why aren't we responding? Well, we don't, we actually don't have the ability. We can't even see that. And we do sometimes get those posts like, hey, someone posted this, they'll send us a screenshot, what are you doing? And we can't even go to access that. And so, you know, as we learn of things, there's ways where we can can use our channel to kind of correct information. Certainly, we're not going to call someone out. But there's a way that we can tackle that in responding by just saying, you know, we understand there's been some rumors or misinformation out there. We want to clarify and put out messaging in that way. And certainly, as any of the Board of Directors receive those kinds of emails or comments from their constituents, pass them our way, so we can help to tackle them through the public agency handle on Nextdoor.
Right. I just, I think we need to have, so I, I agree with everything you just said. You're exactly right. I wasn't at all suggesting we engage in a tit-for-tat. But I do think there needs to be a more intentional strategy, you know, that's affirmative and positive. So, you know, I would, I think maybe for the next meeting, we'd like to, you know, I think we, we should see that, because my sense is that, I mean, this is, this is great information, but my sense is that the negatives are overwhelming whatever accurate information we're trying to put out there.
All right, noted. Thank you. Yeah, something back on that. All right.
I think especially around the water quality issues, by the way.
Ah, okay.
You know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of misinformation, as far as I can tell, about, you know, don't drink the water, and we're lying to people, and, you know, blah, blah, blah. And I just, we really do not want to be in that situation. I mean, Philadelphia and other water agencies back east are really struggling with these campaigns to undermine public confidence in the safety and health of water supplies. And I think, you know, I, I don't want to sound the alarm and say we're heading in that direction, but I, I think there is a, you know, I, I think it is something to be aware of and concerned about. I think we, it's very important that we maintain public trust in the water supply.
Adrienne.
Yeah.
Do we post the CCR on Nextdoor?
We did when we published it. Yeah.
Maybe we should do that every month.
Yeah, maybe so. Nobody knows what a CCR is, but sure.
Well, the people inside know, hopefully know what a CCR is.
I understand. Again, this just goes to, like, talking to the public, the way the public needs to be talked to, is what I'm saying.
No, but what I'm saying is the name of the report is Water Quality Something or Other.
Yeah.
It's kind of obvious, huh?
Right.
It doesn't really go by CCR, except in turtle, inside baseball.
Right. I'm just saying, we.
I hear you, and I agree exactly with what you said about the presentation.
Okay, thanks.
I didn't have the problem understanding it, but it was, I agree. I mean, when Minneke says, can you explain what Potter Valley is, you know, because it's used in initials? Well, that's a glaring problem.
Go ahead. If there's, if there's a way to, you know, I mean, Nextdoor is, is, is a, I mean, we want to, the point is, is to be able to. The point is, is to be able to share information with people so that people can learn. And I don't know whether by us posting things to Nextdoor. Our one, you know, informational message goes out and, and it generates, you know, ten that are misinformation. It might make, you know, it might beg us to, you know, ask the question like, is it, is it really a smart place to put information because it actually leads to more misinformation? So I don't know if there's a way to, to get a sense of that, but you know, we don't want to. We don't want to be causing misinformation to become more prevalent. You know, if that's the nature of, of the way Nextdoor. Operates or the way, the nature of the, of that, of that, that online space.
Yeah, I don't have the answer. I just think we need to be, as a, as a district, we need to be a little bit more intentional than we've been. That's all I'm saying. Because there's a vacuum, we just need to find some way of addressing that. Because I, I hear from people, I mean, I'm not on Nextdoor, but I hear from people every, almost every day, several times a week. About, oh, my God, are you seeing this horrible thing on Nextdoor? And so, yeah.
How big are the Nextdoor territories? Because what I'm thinking, Adrian, is you could have each of the board members sign up and use their access not to comment, but to read.
Yeah. I think this is something we can dive into more. I'd want to look at, there are, there is a public agency message board. Individual public information officers from different communities share best practices and how they troubleshoot some of this. You know, we certainly want to comply with policies of Nextdoor. But I think there are ways to build ambassadors that can help us in those different communities where. They're spotting misinformation and they can point to where we posted, you know, the accurate information and, you know, start to get back to. Getting people to look at the trusted source. For, you know, actual facts about our water, especially water quality and other issues. And so. You know, this is something of interest to the board. We can certainly bring this back at the next committee meeting to discuss further and maybe flesh out some ideas.
That would be great. Thanks.
Yeah. All right, so looking ahead. So we have put together a strategic communications work plan for the next year. It did say for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three, but certainly we've started that work now. And you'll see that as we go through some of this, but a couple of notes I want to make about the work plan. This is really our, serves as our roadmap for our outreach efforts and engagement activities over the next year. This work plan also incorporates elements of the district's strategic communications plan that was developed with a consultant in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And that plan took into account prior customer surveys, research and American Water Works Association messaging and outreach strategies. That plan is still fairly new. There's a lot of content in there that we were able to work with and build into. The work plan that we've put together so that that is not left forgotten. And so the goal for the work plan, it really addresses goal number three, the communications goal of just the district's existing twenty twenty five year strategic plan. And that goal says that we will partner with our community customers and staff to ensure regular and effective public input. Into district policies and to foster an understanding of the safety and value of water. And it calls out specifically a few broader areas, supporting the Board of Directors to facilitate informed policy and decision making. To develop community, effective community outreach, improve the customer experience. And ensure employees are well informed of the district's priorities through strong internal communications. And so to support the, that work plan goal, we've identified six strategic objectives. And those are to avail, elevate awareness both internally and externally of the district's operation and its value. We want everyone to know. That. You know, what, what the work is and what that operation looks like behind the actual delivery of water service to your tap. And what happens to make it, you know, to provide that water service twenty four seven, three hundred sixty five days a year. We also want to enhance the content, timing and delivery mechanisms for stakeholder outreach and expand understanding of the district's mission, vision and strategic priorities. We want to strengthen Marin Waters' brand identity and consistency. And that's not just making sure that our logo is on every piece of material, but consistency in our messaging across all of our. Different communication channels and materials. And the look and feel of those pieces. We also want to increase positive coverage for Marin Waters' digital footprint, and that's both through the news media, through our own social media channels, other people's social media channels, our e-newsletter. Blogs and other platforms that present themselves. And then another strategic objective, we want to improve our online customer access to district services and public meeting documents. And we want to also ensure internal preparedness for emergency communications. So that we're ready to be out front with our messaging in the event of a disaster. Right. And so. We've, in order to deliver on the goals and the strategic objectives, we've broken up. Our focuses into several different areas. And these are really the mechanisms by which we will. Will achieve our goal. And so first, starting with content creation. We want to develop strategic key messages that will then be used to guide our storytelling and ensure consistency in our messaging across all platforms. And so we already have established messages. Obviously, certainly in a lot of our areas, you know, first, we continue to face climate-driven drought conditions. And we want to encourage our customers to use water wisely. And we have a variety of ways that the district supports customers in doing that. You know, we also are going to continue to push the message that we're making critical plans and investments to address our aging infrastructure. In order to ensure that our future water security and we're like, in order to secure our future water security. And ensure the reliability of our service. And then also that we're taking efforts to protect our natural resources in a sustainable manner. And so kind of the next step in developing that platform is to really. Package those together and figure out how to integrate them to tell that complete story. In a number of different communications mechanism or communications platforms. And then to complement our messaging, we want to make sure that we have the visual assets to support that, the written content. And so we do have a number of great pictures, but we find every day that we're in need of something new. And so we've been working to develop a shot list so that we can get out in the field and get some more photography that really tells the story that we want to. We have a great in-house photographer on our team that is going to help us to do some of that. And we've got a couple of other photographers. In our district staff who will be able to lend support to that as well. We also will be creating a year-long editorial calendar to plan, develop and deploy consistent content at key points. We've already started this work and we're doing it for a number of our platforms, our monthly e-news as well as our social media channels. And we'll continue to build that out so that we don't miss key opportunities to get our messaging out there. And then we want to refresh and build upon the campaign.
Adrian, Adrian, what are you talking about? Editorial calendar. What are, what are the events that are going to be called out?
Yeah, so I think it's kind of really to identify different points throughout the year where we know there's things that. We want to make sure that we're out in front of, right? When the seasons change, we want to make sure we're ahead of. Talking to people about what they need to do with their irrigation. When we've got, you know, scheduled upcoming events, we want to make sure we give enough time to notice people about those that they do attend, that we get them to register and. You know, it's also kind of. Looking at what's coming up and where are other ways we can promote or capitalize on different things we have going on, like for example. And we have a social media editorial calendar in place now. Ember Stomp is a countywide event coming up to promote. Wildfire resilience and preparedness, both amongst the community and agencies within Marin County. They're doing work to prepare for wildfire season. And, you know, that event is coming up. We're going to be there. We have a booth there. And so we're actively promoting that event, but then at the same time, we're kind of leveraging that to say, hey, this event's coming up, but if you can't make it to this event. We also are offering this fires, fire smart wildfire, I can't remember the name of it. Oh, my goodness, fire smart landscaping webinar. In a couple of weeks and, you know, you can also sign up to attend this online if that works better for your schedule. And we'll also make a recording available that later. So it's trying to find ways to leverage other things that are happening to make our content relevant. And so, you know, and also as we're looking forward to rate setting. You know, in the next year and, and all the plans that go into that over the next year, finding critical opportunities. And different message points where we want to be communicating out to our customers about. You know, the importance and the value of water and have a solid plan and timing for how we'll do that. And so an editorial calendar is really helpful in that way.
But I interpreted it a little differently, but I, I enjoyed your explanation too. I, I'm just wondering if there's any cycle to the IJ editorials. If there's any pattern that. I've never looked at them that way, but it would be interesting to look at them that way, I think. To see if there are times of the year where we could trigger more interest. From the, or less interest from the IJ, either way, provide information rather than have them just guess what we're doing.
Sure. And that's something that we can build out in our editorial calendar as well as, you know, different points where we want to. Try to pitch to our news media partners or the editorial board about different things that are happening that certainly can be woven in there. I hear you on that.
I, I know that you periodically have had meetings with the editorial board. Is, is, do you do that on any regular basis? And if not, is it possible to set that up on a regular basis?
We don't currently, but we can, that's something we can look into.
Seems to me we always used to do that, Jack, that there was like a quarterly meeting with the editorial board.
Yeah.
I, I don't think it was a quarterly. I think we did it, we did every, we had a, we had a cycle where we were doing it every six months.
Six months, okay, whatever. But it was routine.
It was routine. I agree.
Yeah, we can look at resurrecting that.
And I think maybe looking beyond, I know the IJ is, is, you know, dominates a lot of. People's thinking, but there are other media outlets. People are getting their information in a lot of other ways. So I think. You know, I would, and we, you may not be, I think you're going to talk about traditional media later, so maybe we can talk about that then, but. We've, we've had a, I think a limited focus on, on the IJ, which is fine. I mean, it's, it's an important paper locally, but. You know, we really should be reaching out, I think, far more people, for example, subscribe to the Chronicle than to the IJ here.
That's correct.
So, you know, you're missing a ton of people and you're sort of over. You're, you're sort of over emphasizing a fairly limited, you know, editorial board, if that's the only, if those are the only folks you're talking to.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then. Finally, in terms of content creation, we want to look at way, new ways to engage with customers to collect and develop customer water use efficiency success stories. That we can then highlight in our own communications. And really, we were inspired by this idea, or this idea came, came about because we've been hearing from customers. Who are writing us to let, to let us know of things that they're proud they were able to discover. By using our resources, we included one on the slide here that. You know, a resident had been out at one of our Earth Day events and got their dye tabs and took them home and put them in their storage tanks and immediately called their plumber because they had. Three tanks with blue water in the bowl. And so they know that they need to do some work to address those old and leaky toilets. So. We want to look at more opportunities like that where we can take those and turn them around and use them back in our outreach materials. Similarly, we had a recent conservation assistance program. Consultation where we had a great success story where a household was trying to do everything right with their landscape. And just couldn't figure out why they were having such high water use on their bills. And one of our staff was out there and they were able to troubleshoot and issue with the irrigation controller and immediately. Achieved a much greater water savings. And so we're looking at where we can then use those to share with our customers to just show that, you know, people all the time are finding ways to. Eliminate water waste and are doing so with the services that we offer.
Why don't we have?
Have a fairly sophisticated program of reaching out into the schools. And presenting them with speakers and so forth. And I haven't heard about that. For a while, which doesn't mean we're not doing it. I just haven't heard about it. Do we still do that? Are we still active in that? I know I and other board members have actually. Gone in and spoken to classes many times, but not recently.
Yeah, and that was on hold during the pandemic and we have just relaunched that program and. I think Carrie could probably speak to that more, but we did just help them to refresh that information.
Carrie nodding your head, so she, I can tell she's on board.
Plus, Jack just volunteered.
And we will add you to our speakers bureau list, which I will be talking about a year or bit later.
Yeah, I, it's worth mentioning, I, I spoke, I was asked by a garden club, Marin Garden Club member to, to, to speak at their afternoon. I don't know if it was like a quarterly or semi-annual lunch meeting and, and Adrian developed some great slides for me that. That were super easy to go through and people were really, really interested. And I just, you know, couldn't say enough that like we, we, you know. I, I think for those of us who, you know, who are on the board or, and obviously staff too. You know, it's pretty easy to get out there and, and do these presentations. We know the content far. In more detail than, than folks really need to know. So a simple presentation can keep us from going too wonky and. But a great way to do outreach. So I, you know, I would, I'll loudly raise my hand too to. To do more of these in the future and, and, you know, there are, you know, if there's even just a, if we even. Could develop a list of different, you know, community groups that, that, that would be interested in programs or we could outreach to, maybe we can. Divide up, you know, and, and try to, you know, really. Do some outreach, especially, you know, if they're, they're, they're community groups that land in our districts. These are things that I think we, we particularly have a responsibility to, to make an effort to do.
I really agree. I think we're probably getting ahead of Adrian's presentation, but I'll just. Maybe just.
He's used to it.
I'll just add her super quickly. Um, I, so I just did a presentation to Sustainable Mill Valley. So. I think one thing, Adrian, that would be great, if you're preparing, if you could send those slides that you did for Monte around to everybody, that would be fantastic. And maybe. And maybe we can even set up a Google sheet for, of course, within the boundaries of the, the Brown Act. For the board and staff so that we can see what events are coming up that people are planning to go to. Because I realized like the Marin, the Mill Valley thing, it just kind of came up and I just did it. But I think it would be better to coordinate it with the, you know, so that we all know what one another is doing.
Yeah, absolutely. And we will touch on the speakers bureau a bit later, but that's great. To hear that offer. And I, I do like the idea of the Google sheet. We actually just implemented that just for our. Own outreach events that our staff attend because different departments and divisions get asked to things all the time. And we were trying to. Create a more coordinated process for that. So we could certainly replicate something similar for events that we get asked to go speak at.
Right. But in the near term, if you could send those slides around to data, all of us, that'd be great.
Yeah, I will. And I'll just say that they're now out of date since we've had some water role changes, but all the same, send them out. Just know we'll need to work on a refreshed version.
Sure.
Oh, you might as well update them. There's no reason to send them out without accurate information. Because people will be inclined to use them, but we just, just get them current before you send them.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree because I kind of want to see them because I've got a couple of events coming up, so I'm happy to tweak them. But I, I would just like to have a, have them just to see what you got, what you. So I'm happy to tweak them, but I, I would just like to have a, have them just to see what you got, what you guys have put together.
Well, I think a uniform tweak is better than individual tweaks in general.
Adrian's got a lot going on and I just don't want to wait, you know.
I think it's, why don't we ask the question instead of guessing? When do you think you could update those, Adrian?
Well, it was actually updating a kind of a district 101 slide is one of our projects identified in this plan that I was going to get to here. And, you know, it was probably wasn't the first thing we were going to tackle, but if it rises to the priority level of this board, we could move that up.
Thanks.
Get that out soon.
The other thing I was thinking about is that maybe we could have a tip of the month on the webpage for your discussion about the controller being adjusted properly, the irrigation controller. That might be a good place to, just to start with that one, just a little, you know, something that you click on the webpage and say, here's our tip of the month on things to, to help you stop wasting water.
Thanks. We'll look into some ideas around that. All right. So moving into collateral development, one major project that we have underway right now is really focused on talking about our infrastructure and our water system. And that's the launch of our public safety, of public facing interactive capital improvement program map. And so this will be integrated with the district's website. And we're actually developing a whole new section of the website dedicated to construction and infrastructure. That was one area where it felt like we did have a void in our website. There's no like landing place where you can learn more about our water system and our infrastructure and what's on deck. And it's more a matter of searching for documents to find out, you know, what items recently gone to the board for approval. And so this really is a way to create a home base for that information. And then we're working closely with Crystal and the engineering team and GIS to create this new interactive map that maps out our two-year, two fiscal year plans for capital improvement projects and they're color coded. We've got icons, so it'll show if it's actively in construction or if it's something that's in planning or if it was already completed in the last two years. And we're looking forward to launching that really soon as well as publishing that new section of the website. And this will really help to kind of further visually tell our story of everywhere that we're constantly working on and thinking about our infrastructure and, and making improvements to ensure the reliability of our system. And then.
Seems to me also, Adrian, that we should be working really hard to loop the county in. I was speaking last night to Jared Huffman and to Stephanie Moulton Peters, my supervisor. And you know, this issue in Marin City is boiling over. And it's something we really need to provide information on to help them, both Marin City and the county in, and Jared's office for that matter, in dealing with these issues. So she expressed a great deal of, of concern for information. And I don't know if we ever go to the county, you know.
We, we do. I, I, I just need to jump in. So Stephanie and I are also in touch about that. It's my division. So she and I are actually talking today, you know, about doing some outreach. And anyway, I have been in touch with staff about that. So.
I'm thinking more Cynthia of us talking to the county more than the outreach, you know, just, I don't know. Do we report normally? You know, I don't, I don't recall any events like that.
I think for this, right. I think for this, this, this is exactly what Stephanie and I have been talking about and will be continuing to talk about later today.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Separate from the CIP web and map project. Another area of website improvement is around our user experience in finding board and committee meeting documents. Certainly we've heard from members of the public over many months as well as board members about how it can be difficult to find documents related to specific agenda items. And so in the next fiscal year, we'll be looking to research and procure and integrate an agenda management system that will provide a much cleaner and easier way for users to navigate specific items within any one agenda and click right to the staff report and related documents for that. We do totally hear people that have made comments about that, that sometimes navigating those 80 to 100 page board packets can be challenging. And so we're excited to launch this effort and try to make that an easier process for our customers who tune into meetings.
What is the schedule for completing that?
We wouldn't be starting until the new fiscal year. But hopefully that's something we could at least procure the system for early in the new fiscal year. Probably in the, in one or two months, it'll take longer to roll it out. There are some impacts to kind of staff workflow and some uploading agendas and getting those published. And so we need to do a certain level of training there and then integrating with our website before it rolls out. So I would say you're looking, that's probably within a five to six month timeline that we'd be publishing that. And I might be conservative in that estimate, but do.
So by the end of the calendar year.
Yeah.
Okay. That's good because if a question comes up often enough, I need an answer, you know. So we've just been kind of letting it rest without an answer, but now we have an answer. So that's great.
Yeah, yeah. I think, and we've, we've, we already started dabbling a little bit in our research. So we, it's not that we haven't started anything yet. And our board secretary has really done a great job in going out and looking at a number of different systems and talking with other agencies and of comparable size to the district and also others that are using more robust systems just to get an idea of where to go. So we've got some work on that underway already. Director Kohler, did you have a question? Sorry, okay. All right. And then of course, anytime you roll out something, that's going to significantly change the appearance of a site. You want to make sure you have good how-to information on that. And we know we have a number of users that tune in regularly and have a system for how they access our documents. And so just to prepare for that transition, we'll have some screen recordings of how you use that system and some promotion to let people know that we've made it easier to access our meetings and documents. And so that'll all be a part of the publishing and rollout of the system.
Seems to me we should have a YouTube video on exactly what it does once it's ready to go. And just walk somebody through it, you know.
Absolutely.
We got the YouTube channel, just put that on there. We could say, hey, when you get a chance, let's go take a look at this.
Yeah. And we'll actually be able to embed that video, that was the thought, on our website right by where you'd access all those materials. So if they're struggling, they can just refer to that for some step-by-step help.
Perfect.
Yeah. And then finally, we want to improve customer navigation on our district website homepage. We, and there's some comments that have come up that I think are captured in this item, but we, you know, we're creating these new sections of our website. We're suddenly going to have a construction and infrastructure landing page. We have this new kind of landing hub for all of our water use efficiency information. And we want to just make it really easy for people to find that and kind of have that menu of options on the homepage. With kind of some quick, easy to navigate buttons. I think it's a great place to land something like the, President Russell suggested with the tip of the month. We just want to make that a place that's really easy for people to find information and also to find services. Right now you have to dig kind of deep to find how to get to various services that you might be looking for in the district. And we just want to create an easier way for customers to get through to where they want to go. All right. And then branding is another area of focus. And this is really how we want to reflect our brand image at every opportunity, whether it's our outreach booth out at an event, when someone walks into our customer service lobby, if they're out at the watershed and see our signage. We want to look at areas where we can really help to visually tell our story and use short messaging to convey kind of that story behind the glass of water. You know, what goes into that service delivery? And so we'll be looking at some creative ways to implement that. Everything that's shown on this slide is just conceptual right now. These are not final drafts or anything, but we wanted to give an idea of where our heads are at with that. And then of course, we'll want to review and refresh all of our district materials that are currently in circulation to make sure that they're on message and on brand. And then we have an interest in developing a very brief branding video to communicate our story and that massive operation behind the district's water service delivery. And we don't want that to be a talking head video. We want it very much to be focused on the human element and also, you know, use beautiful imagery and B-roll from our various facilities out on the water, out on the watershed and of our workers in action. And so we'll be doing some work around scripting for that and kind of storyboarding what that might look like.
Maybe there's an opportunity.
Yes.
I think the, I think the branding that we deliver more than water is really important. So I haven't seen a lot of that, so I'm really glad to see it here. I think that's, I think if we can build on that, it would be very valuable.
All right. Great. Yeah. And that was something that did come out of 2018, 19. It was a concept that hasn't been utilized. And we did like a lot of the imagery and the messaging associated with that. So we're interested in carrying that forward.
Maybe there's a way, Adrian, to have a little story about like the, the day in the life of a water molecule at MMWD or something like that, and just walk him through, you know, from the sky to the reservoir, to the treatment plant, to the distribution system, to their in-town reservoirs, to the house or something like that.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. And that's certainly kind of where we were at with that, exactly. A full day of operations, but I like that idea. Thank you for that suggestion. And then finally, the, getting back to the PowerPoint presentation, and we do have it on our to-do list to update that PowerPoint presentation, make sure that it aligns with our, our story and the messaging and visuals that we'll be putting together.
Which returns to my first question, didn't get answered is when is that going to be done?
Well, when we get to the next steps, I talk about one of our next steps is of putting together a timeline with, you know, to kind of map out when we'll complete these projects. I am hearing from, that may be a priority. So that's something that we can probably get done in the next month.
All I'm asking about is the slides that went to money.
Oh.
Can they be updated in a timely manner? Or should we just, should you just send them out as what they are?
I think we could probably update those ones fairly quickly, yeah, and do a more robust redesign further out. Yeah.
You know, something that just comes to mind too, maybe you need a date on the slides. As of.
Right.
Yeah. Just every month, the, you know, some of the data that I spoke about will change. And, and so, you know, how, how to keep a good version control, you know, right? You know, I think that might be the, the way to just track it with a date on the slides.
Yeah. No, that's a great idea. Thank you. All right. And then we will have a focus on our digital presence. We want to set annual team targets and goals for each social media and e-marketing platform. So, you know, and then we want to review our analytics regularly and have those help to inform the decisions on when we post our information. That actually does matter and can help or hurt the success of your posts and the traction it receives. Recently, I was surprised to learn that posting late in the evening on Facebook is actually the best time for our content. We've been traditionally posting earlier in the day before the work hours. So we might be looking at trying to test around and make some shifts in that. But you know, we're also sending out these weekly analytic or monthly analytic reports. And we, you know, as we go forward, want to have some specific goals on, you know, gaining additional subscribers, maintaining a certain level of open breaks on our different platforms. So we'll be putting some work around that within the team. And then we do want to launch a campaign to propose, to promote monthly e-news signups. And I know Director Kohler asked about that earlier. So we haven't done a full-blown marketing campaign for e-news signups yet. And so there is a range of opportunities there. We can do social media campaigns and kind of the lower hanging fruits, things that are already available to us. And then look at, you know, doing a bill insert specific to that, making it really easy for someone to immediately sign up using a QR code so they can do it from their mobile device. We also have the ability with our website and through the use of MailChimp, our e-marketing tool, to put a little pop-up window on the website. So the first time someone comes to our site, it asks them to sign up before they enter the site. Sometimes those can get annoying, so we probably wouldn't want to do that for an extended period, but maybe run a campaign for a couple of months to gain additional followers that way. And there's a host of, of other opportunities, but those were a couple that came to mind first.
That's great. I know I raised this earlier, but I'm really glad to hear that you're going to be doing that. Cause I, yeah, I feel like we haven't, I mean, I know we've done that in the past, but not, you know, for a while. So I think more and more people, even, even older people are getting more willing to, to sign up for, for, you know, electronic news. So I'm glad to hear that. Are you going to cover timing on that in next steps?
Uh, yeah, we, well, sorry. So next step just says that we will be working on our timeline for that. But I think that it's something that has been on our minds already and we really want to get that going because the sooner we can gather more captured audience, the more success we have with all of our campaigns. So that does seem to rise to the top.
Great.
Yeah. And then we want to leverage our partnerships with our communicators and other towns and cities in the county to help reshare and disseminate our digital messaging wherever possible. I do participate in the Marin County Public Information Officers Group. We meet bi-weekly to just cover really, first and foremost, what's happening with COVID, but then to share other updates from each of the jurisdictions. And so I provide updates on kind of hot items in the district, changes in water rules where we are with the drought and also share resources with those communicators so that they can also share them on their own platforms. And we'll be trying to tap in and do more of that going forward. And then we are already trying our best to do this, but responding to questions and comments on our social platforms within 24 hours as it's appropriate and possible to do as something that we want to strive to keep in place and shows that we're connected, that we're listening and that we're responsive to our customers' needs. And then for community events and partnerships, we want to track and evaluate our participation in various community outreach opportunities. And we want to make sure that we're participating in events that strategically align with our goals and help us to maximize our customer reach. And we are evaluating our participation in events this year. We have kind of a tracking system we've developed with all the staff that attend. And can I do an assessment after and take notes so that we know for next year how to plan for our time and participation in those events? And then we want to continue to develop partnerships with outside nonprofit groups and other agencies that can help us to reach customers that we may not normally be reaching. And then we will want to update and promote the district speakers bureau. And then so glad to hear that we have willing volunteers from our board of directors here. And so we'll keep that in mind as we're putting that together and try to come up with some collaborative calendar where we could coordinate on that better.
Adrian, I know that the farmers markets are a great, I think they're, I think they're great community events in general, but they're, you know, they are a time when, when people are out and moving around. And are we, are we at the farmers markets? Or like, I know like the San Rafael one has just started up earlier this month and.
Yeah. So we actually were planning to participate in the San Rafael one and just got notification that, that they were camp, that they were discontinuing the market. And so, yeah, at least for the time being, if you know something, we don't, let's speak later. Cause we were hoping to get out there because we knew that was a good event to try to.
That was, that was in the newspaper, Adrian. It's the health issue with COVID, the spread of COVID that they're worried about.
Okay. Yeah. I, so we're, we are exploring some other opportunities. We know there's a few other farmers markets. We certainly can, we don't have the resources to attend all of them, but select days, there is opportunities there. And yeah, we have the district's been at farmers markets in the past and can certainly look at going to those again.
Um, before you go on, I'm. Before you go on, I think this is great. It almost sounds like you're sort of starting from scratch. So I'm a little, it would be, it would be good to hear what you're doing to mine, what we've done in the past. I mean, obviously, we all know COVID has put a lot of this on hold. But, you know, we had a fairly robust presence in the community for a long time, you know, going to various events. I know I connected you to two events just in the last few months. I just heard from TCSD here in Tam Valley that the district didn't reach out about Creekside Fridays, which we've done for many, many years. So I think that opportunity may have passed. So I'm just interested in where you're starting with this, given, like I say, that this isn't new, right? The district has, you know, really, I think, worked to be an anchor institution that's engaged in a lot of these community activities for a long time.
Yeah, and I think that we are getting back on our feet. I mean, the, most of the events have actually been on hold the last couple of years as well. And the district hasn't participated in outreach events for over two years as a result of that. But we are regrouping and we've attended a number of events that I showed earlier already. Certainly the ones that you presented to us, we did have representation at or some level of participation. And any that come into the board, I received others from, from some of the other Board of Directors. And we are participating in those and considering them as they come up. You know, certainly we want to make sure that the events that we do participate in are directly reaching our customers and are good opportunities to, you know, communicate on our initiatives and in programs that we want to push out. And so far, I think everything that's come in has, there was one, I've gotten a few from individuals, not from our Board of Directors, where, you know, it was maybe for more of a tourism event or something that was attracting individuals from outside the agency and they wanted to borrow our equipment rather than have us there as a representative. And so some of those were, you know, were weighing and there may have been participation in the past. And we're trying to evaluate how we move forward with those ones.
Right. But I'm really asking a different question. I mean, so I hear that you're, you know, like I say, you're, you're going forward with the events that I've brought up, that other board members have brought up. I'm just saying, we've, and we all, I think we all absolutely understand about COVID and things that haven't happened. I'm really asking a different question, which is, we have been very active. And it does seem that as those old events, you know, are we, you know, are coming back together like Creekside. You know, it's not, it's not clear that we're, we're yet fully engaged with, with, with the same list of events and participants. And part, I guess, community partners is really what I'm talking about from the past. Because I mean, I don't know about the other board members, but for me, it's a little bit random. I don't have the time to do that kind of surveying. So for me, I'm passing along, you know, invitations that come to me. So that's, I think that's a little bit probably too random, too organic to do what you're trying to do here. So I'm really asking, you know, whether, you know, you feel you have the resources you need to build on the things we were doing, you know, three, four, or five years ago.
Yeah, you know, the participation in events doesn't just fall within the communications team. We also pull in the expertise of our already efficiency staff members, sometimes our customer service staff members. We sent one of our meter readers out recently, who was great to give a little bit different perspective and expertise in that area, talking to customers. So I think that in terms of staffing, you know, we, we have what we need, you know, in terms of maybe missing some opportunities that we've been a part of previously, you know. We do have a quite new team, so we're not aware of everything automatically. And so, you know, we can try to do what we can to go back and look at the history of what we've been to and see where we might be missing some of those connections and reach out so that we can ensure that we are participating. And we definitely are trying to make sure as we're tracking our participation in events that we are well-rounded and equitable between where we're spending our time between divisions. And that's really important to me. And so, but yeah, certainly if there's something that you think that we're missing or it comes by your, by, you know, across any of your emails, please forward and we will follow up.
I had a question too. You specifically mentioned nonprofits, but I think we should reach out beyond nonprofits. We used to be aligned with a AAA baseball team. I don't remember their name, like the Penguins or something like that. I remember.
It was in Monty's district. Armando went, I think, to every single game.
Yeah. And also I think Dan did before Kerry. Somebody was that toilet guy, you know, that there was a.
John, John the Toilet.
Yeah.
Showed up at all our events.
So, you know, that's something we used to do too.
Right.
And I think we actually paid them, I think. You know, we sponsored them.
Oh, the team. We give money to the team. John, John was a, was various staff members.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But he was at every baseball team, every baseball game, as I recall.
Larry, that was the Pacifics, I think. And I think they are no more. I think, I think they may have gone out of business.
We're pretty close to Penguin.
That is. It starts with the same letter. I had another question, Adrian. You know, we have kind of a library of educational videos and instructive videos. And I'm just wondering if it would be worth, I don't know if those are archived anywhere in particular on the website, but whether it would be worth inquiring with Community Media Marin to see if we could fill in some of their programming time with our videos. Because I think it would, you know, and maybe you or another staff member could give a brief introduction or something, maybe not. I don't know what the production value is. But, you know, we could actually be broadcasting to the community some of, some of those videos. I think that, you know, even if they're five, 10-minute videos, they could use them to fill in content.
That's great. Thank you.
I do want to flag, the Pacifics have not gone under. They're still playing. Their schedule is up. There are games. So.
Okay.
It's the Penguins that went under, Larry.
Okay, guys.
They did close their office.
Okay.
I'm just looking, I'm just looking at their schedule for this year. But anyway, good, but I, this is, these are good points. I know since you're trying to move us along.
I really am.
These are great opportunities. So thank you, Adrian, for, you know, listening to all our great ideas that generate lots of work for you.
Right. And I just want to take a pause here because, Adrian, I know you've got a couple more slides. I have a hard stop at 11. And I think we've got a whole fairly robust presentation from Kerry. So I'm going to just check in with the board. I'm going to propose that we, I really apologize for this, Kerry, but this, I think we haven't had a communications meeting for a long, long time. And I think this has been a very important, very robust conversation. But I'm going to see if the board will be willing to reschedule the efficiency piece of this. Because I think we're going to lose a few of us. And I really think the board needs to be present for that conversation.
I think that makes sense.
Yep, that's, that's fine with me.
And I'm going to suggest, Adrian, can you, can I, can we just have you finish up? And I know I'm going to have to pass this on to somebody else to do public comment. I'm sorry, but I, my 11 o'clock is as far as I can go.
I'm going to be stepping out myself, so I'm not sure what that will mean.
Molly, how can we deal with, and Monte, did you say you have to leave at 11 also?
Yep.
Okay, I can keep going.
Okay. And I apologize in advance to members of the public if we're not able to get to your comments before three of us have to go. But Adrian, I do want to let you finish. I think we've had the board comments along the way. So let's see how far we get in the next 10 minutes.
All right, I will go quickly. I think I'm getting towards the end here. And all right, so next focus is earned media. And most important to that, we really want to be sure to get our story out first. And so, you know, when the board takes significant action on something, we want to be ready as soon as possible following the board meeting to share that news directly with our constituents on our platforms and also to get our news release out to the news media so that they can cover it with all of the information. And then we also want to create a newsroom that's prominently accessible from our homepage. Again, this was along with that redesign of the homepage and making things just really easy to find, including for our media partners. We want to house all of our news releases there, my contact information, important district fact sheets. I spend a lot of time when talking with press, you know, that are reaching out from outside of our region, just kind of educating them on Marin's water system, where our water supply comes from. And so having that stuff readily available and easy to just format for them would be really helpful. And then also providing a deep digital media kit that they can utilize. We get requests occasionally for photographs or B-roll when a reporter can't get out to the watershed or somewhere else to get imagery that they want to use for their story. And if we're able to provide it to them, then we're kind of handpicking what visuals go into their story. And the more we can do that, the better it can help to tell our story even through their outlets. And so then we want to continue to proactively pitch positive news stories about the district. Just had a good example of that last week. We're working with KTVU right now to see if we could potentially do a ride-along at one of our conservation assistance program consultations. And they were very interested in that idea and just see what that's like to help us to promote that service that we provide to our customers. So we're working to find a willing customer and schedule something, but hopefully more to come on that soon. I also want to give a shout out to Sean Horn and Carl Sanders, who yesterday did a great tour of the watershed with KPIX for a story that they did on the vegetation management work happening out on the watershed in preparation for fire season. And that'll be in your media monitoring report tomorrow. But that was another example of the time we were able to generate some positive coverage by coordinating this tour with the reporter so he could really get a hands-on look at how things go. And it turned out really well, so I'm excited to share that. And then we want to, I actually have it on here, coordinate with our operations staff to potentially host key media for tours. And so building on what happened yesterday, we want to do more of that when we can. And then we also want to be tracking our media mentions to monitor for inaccuracies. And we've got our weekly media coverage report that's going out to the board and to staff every Thursday now. But I check that dashboard sometimes multiple times a day, but for sure every morning, just to see what's come out and make sure that if there is any errors, we're able to get those addressed as quickly as possible. And then for paid media, we certainly have done a lot of paid media advertising already, and we'll continue to do so. We want to leverage our partnerships with Sonoma Marin Water Saving Partnership, as well as the Bay Area Communications Network, where it makes sense to expand our reach and maximize use of our dollars for our messaging. And then we want to explore new targeted advertising opportunities where possible. And then for internal outreach, we just started disseminating a bi-weekly public information update to our customer service facing staff. And it really just provides kind of a rundown of the key, key items, key messages in different areas of the district. What's, you know, what's the status of the drought? What are our water rules? Any significant actions taken by the board that they might hear about from a customer, anything that came up in the news? And so we're sending this out on Wednesdays to staff, every other Wednesday following a board meeting. And so far, that's received some positive feedback. And then we also are now sharing all of our news releases and our e-news to all employees across the district. So they're in the know, no matter what department or division they work in. And same with our media coverage, the weekly media coverage, we just started two weeks ago, sending that to all staff so they can also see what's being said about the district in the news. And then we have started a quarterly employee recognition newsletter. This is timed with our quarterly employee recognition ceremonies. And it just recaps the award winners and is another way to help keep staff informed of what's happening in various divisions and districts and significant project works or achievements. And so it's good just for awareness of district happenings and also it's great boost for employee morale as well. And then for our focus on emergency preparedness, we want to do some work to develop emergency messaging and graphic templates that are pretty much as ready as they can be to push out in the event of some sort of disaster. And we're preparing those for different types of disaster scenarios, earthquakes, fires, floods, et cetera. And working with Eric Goldman, our safety manager, for some direction on that. And but we really just want to be in a place where we feel ready to go so that we're able to get our information out there first and be the trusted source when there's a crisis. And that's certainly important during a time of disaster when the rumor mill can go crazy on social media to get out in front of that as quickly as you can with the facts. And we also want to build our relationships with other agency public information officers in Marin County and the broader Bay Area. Because during an emergency, we'll be working hand-in-hand to co-author information so that we are putting out unified messaging as we coordinate with the county and with other cities or towns that may be impacted. And then we want to connect with our local media partners in advance so that they understand and we understand how well we communicate during an emergency. And I've got KCBS Radio and KGO Radio's logos up here because they are the radio networks that will turn to for dissemination of emergency information. And that's both for updates to the public as well as to our employees in case our telecommunications infrastructure was down or other Wi-Fi. We want to make sure that there's other ways that district employees know where they would report and how we would communicate with them. And it is through those radio networks. So having those established relationships is super important to that. And then last, we want to send our team members to emergency trainings and increase their understandings of the function of a joint information center, a joint information system in an emergency. And that's really the centralized, multiple-agency communication system that gets activated during an emergency so that we're all working together, no matter what agency, to get our information out in a unified format. And so for next steps, for all of this work, we want to establish our project's implementation timeline to map out when we hope to achieve various aspects of the plan. And then we'll, of course, be meeting with our district teams to collaborate on all these projects. And then we'll be providing our updates to the board on our progress on that work at our upcoming committee meetings. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Adrian. Since I have to go, I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments here. First, this was incredibly substantive and robust, so I really want to thank you for this. I appreciate the concreteness of all of these proposals, so kudos to you for that. On the timeline, I'd like to see if that can be provided to the board sooner rather than later, because this is a lot. And I think having a sense of your, you know, you've already heard us asking when this, when that. For myself, I just liked the slides today. I mean, I understand Larry Russell wants them later after they're updated, but I'd like to see them now. The other, my substantive, the one thing I didn't see here that I, I'd like to consider with staff and come back to, I mean, we only do these meetings every quarter. I think we should do another meeting in the next month, given everything you've got here. So I guess that's my one comment. And my second is, I think you need to think, the district should think about doing a new consumer survey. A lot of what you're talking about, and I think correctly, is updating our messaging. I think to do that, we need to be updating ourselves about consumer attitudes. The drought has been a lot. There's been a lot of media. There's been, we've already talked about some of the misinformation out there. I think we will be in a much stronger position to craft messages that are meaningful, that are impactful if we have updated information about what people are thinking of about water, water quality, water supply. The district is an entity, all of that, I think, would be useful. So those are my quick comments. Any other board comments before I hand this over to Larry to, to do public comment? Okay. I think we're going to public comment then. Larry, you're set to take that over?
Yeah, yeah, all set.
All right, great. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Terry, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one. Larry Minnikes, Mr. Minnikes, I've enabled your talking point or talking permissions.
Good morning. Very good presentation, Adrian. Thank you. And there's, there's a lot to unpack there. One suggestion from last night is maybe like a key for technical terms where someone can go and see what everything means, might be easy. However, this morning, while you were talking, I went to Santa Clara's Water District to see how they approached this. And the difference is they call it learning center. We call it education and outreach. But they have one interesting program that you might consider. It's called the Valley Water. It's called the Valley Water Youth Commission. It's made up of 21 high school students throughout Santa Clara County, each appointed by one of seven board members. It is an official advisory committee that assists the board with public policy, education outreach, and all matters impacting Santa Clara County youth. The Youth Commission meets quarterly and each commissioner serves a two year term. Very interesting. So I just want to put that out there. It's another way for outreach and another way to reach parents as well as students and get them involved. So that's my comment this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further comments.
Okay. Well, with that, I think we can bring the meeting to a close.
So we do have, just to point out, we do have two other items on the agenda. Am I hearing that we want to continue?
I thought those were being put off.
I heard the water efficiency program update. Did we also want to move the modifications to water efficiency incentives? Is that the direction of the?
I think so.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that understanding on everybody's part. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So I think that's a great idea.